Thank you, everyone. I've always wanted to get called into a meeting by being told 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, Action. So that is a life goal accomplished. Welcome to our Board of Commissioners' virtual meeting for Friday, April 24th. I will call the meeting to order now at by my clock 8:05 a.m. And Myra, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hallman.
Present.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Commissioner Golly.
Present.
Commissioner Beach.
Commissioner Costello.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner. Commissioner Simmons.
Present.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Golladay.
Thank you, Myra. Due to the COVID-19 situation, the Bi-State Development Board meetings will be held until further notice. Individuals can watch this by selecting the Watch link on Public Meetings page of bi-statedevelopment.org. Public comments received by 7:30 a.m. on the day of a board meeting will be read during public comment portion of the board meeting. Please be patient with our new format. Ms. Bennett, were there any comment cards submitted?
No, Commissioner, no comment cards were submitted.
Thank you. The next item of order is item four with the minutes of the February 21st Board of Commissioners meeting. These minutes, we need a motion to approve.
Commissioner Cox, I'll motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is the report of the President. Talby.
Good morning, everybody. First of all, I want to thank you for your patience in dealing with these extraordinary times and this meeting format. I hope that this works for the very necessary meeting and for our statutory requirement to pass our budget today. So I just want to note a few things very quickly. First, on Wednesday, I did attend a memorial, really kind of gathering for our operator, Dennis Wallace, at the DeBoliver facility. We did it out in the parking lot to try to observe the social distancing norms. And I will tell you that it was encouraging to see the courage of our operators who were out there along with our partners from 788, from ATU. And of course, Jessica and her staff, who have done yeoman's work to try to keep the city of St. Louis moving. In the end, that's what we're talking about, is keeping the city moving. And I was, quite frankly, inspired by that very difficult day. I want to note that as a positive, we have moved forward on the hazard pay bonus, which will be in place this week. So that's very positive. I received a lot of comments from our operators as a thank you. I also spoke on your behalf briefly at the gathering, talking about how the Board of Commissioners is behind our operator corps, so I will note that. Also, as you know, we went through a modest adjustment in service on Monday, and I'm happy to report that that has gone very well. As a matter of fact, the last two days, I know we have missed zero trips. That, of course, is one of the intents, is being sure that the level of service is something that we can provide on a regular basis, assuming with the pressure of the COVID-19. So I will keep this very brief, as we have a fairly full agenda. When we get to the budget presentation, we will move through essentially slides nine through 20 on the presentation side. We're trying to concentrate, obviously, since we've already made a full board budget presentation, that we're trying to concentrate on the slides that are relevant to the COVID effects. So that will be the highlight, and that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. We will have now the report of the Combined Operations Committee and the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee, so bear with me while I switch scripts. So we held the combined meeting of the Operations and Audit, Finance, and Administration Committees on March 20th at 8:30 a.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your board packet under tab six. We're introducing seven items on the consent agenda for your consideration today under item nine with the committee's recommendation for approval. Those items are A through G. A is the intergovernmental agreement between Bi-State Development and the Madison County Transit District. Item B is Title VI Program with Policy Updates. Item C is a sole source contract renewal with remit software. Item D is sole source contract as well. That's for Public Address and Customer Information System. Item E is the contract modification for the new flyer to purchase 14 electric articulated buses. F is the revision to our policies about the board and committee meetings. And G is the letter of agreement between Bi-State Development and the Jerry Costello Group LLC for consulting services for the regional freight and Bi-State Development. We're presenting three additional items for the board's consideration today with the committee's recommendation for approval. Those include Agenda Item 11, the Bi-State Operating and Capital Budget for fiscal years 2021 through 2023. Item 12, which is our contract award for temporary help services. Item 13, a discussion regarding potential refunding of Series 2013 bonds for savings. And at our January meeting, we had several reports. That included our financial statements, treasurer's report, and Metro Transit operations report. That concludes my report as the chair of the Combined Operations and Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting. Are there any questions? Believe we can move forward, thank you. That was... More information, there's no...
Can you move the screen back to the first page of the agenda, please? Thank you. We need to see the rest of the... I think we're on seven, aren't we? Report of the Security Subcommittee?
We are.
Okay.
So, Rose, if you shrink your Zoom screen, you can go back and forth on your laptop between the agenda and the Zoom, and you won't be dropped from the call.
I'm sorry.
If...
Oh, that's okay. Are you talking about my... For my report?
You can go ahead and give your report.
Yeah, I have you guys shrunk, but the agenda... Never mind. I'll just give the report of the Security Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Certainly. A meeting of the Security Subcommittee was held on February 25th, 2020, at 3:30 p.m. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your board packet today under tab seven. At the February meeting, Ms. LaRae Stewart of WSP provided a presentation to the Subcommittee regarding the metro security system strategy. And the committee approved the WSP security plan. An update regarding the status of the general law enforcement contracts, secondary law enforcement contracts, and the transition to F4S was provided by Stephen Berry, General Manager of Public Safety, Vernon Summers, Manager of Contract Security, and Kevin Scott, Director of Security. An update was also provided regarding updates to the rider code of conduct and the ride and abide policy. This concludes my report as co-chair of the Security Subcommittee. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. That's... Aleah, that's your line.
It's quite all right, thank you. Are there any questions of Commissioner Winmiller at this time? Then we will move forward with the adjustment of consent agenda. Are there any adjustments that need to be made at this time?
Yeah, hey, this is Commissioner Zimmerman. I don't know if I need to make a motion or need to do, but I would like to break out one of the consent agendas to vote on it separately, as opposed to the others, and specifically, that's Consent Agenda Item G. If we want to discuss it, that's fine, but I just wanted to, before we start taking motions on that, that was my one request.
The letter of agreement between Bi-State and the Jerry Costello Group?
Yeah, I just wanted to vote no on it, and I didn't want to vote no on all the other items, just to avoid confusion on that. So if we're taking motions at this point, or I can make it in a minute, I would move to approve all consent items minus number G and vote separately on that.
Okay. Are there any other consent agenda adjustments that need to be made? If there are none, then I would need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please all say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Then we need a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item G. Does anyone move that we approve the letter of agreement between Bi-State and the Jerry Costello Group?
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Zimmerman, no.
I'm sorry, I would say aye, but I didn't know whether or not there needed to be discussion, which is why I...
Right.
Okay.
So I'm happy to listen to...
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yeah, I voted no on this in committee. I appreciate kind of our overall trend of spending less on lobbying efforts, but my main concern is, given some of the very uncertain and frankly bad financial information we've been receiving lately, I just think spending on lobbying at this time is, in my opinion, not prudent. So that's why I'm voting no, and I also discussed this in committee. So that's my reasoning. Yeah, I would agree with that. This is Commissioner Cox. I don't think it looks good either right now. I'm not saying that I would be opposed, you know, in the future, but just right now, when we're having to even lay off, you know, people or furlough or whatever, I just, I agree with Commissioner Zimmerman on this. I don't think it looks good, and I think that we really need to be responsible with every dollar that we have. Not saying this isn't totally, but I'm just saying that I'm going to also vote no on that.
May I pose a question?
Sure.
Talby, could you describe the consulting services and why in particular you think it's important at this point for us to enter, for Bi-State to enter into this contract?
Yes, I'll be happy to. So for instance, on this individual...
You've got an echo.
Excuse me. Yes. So thank you. Thank you, Rose, I apologize. So on this individual contract, as you know, as Commissioner Zimmerman brought up, I've been trying to limit the costs of consultants overall, and I've dropped those significantly. In regards to the Costello contract specifically, I asked and negotiated a lower rate of the original bill rate, and I also expanded those services to help us on two critical issues, one being support nationally of the efforts that we need for the downtown airport. As you all know, I have concerns about the long-term viability about the downtown airport, and I'm moving the Costello Group into support that associated with some of the negotiations with FAA. Also, I have expanded the Costello Group's lobbying efforts in Washington, DC to work specifically on the CARES Act funding and receive some important updates as we were fighting for those dollars. So I agree with the, what we need to do with consultants and what my philosophy is, is that they need to be effectively managed and given tasks so that we get as much for the very valuable or important dollars that we're spending on them. And I believe we've done that to this point in conjunction with trying to limit the scope of those overall consulting costs. We currently use... I have provided a list of those, of all of the consultants previously, Commissioner Cox, and I'm happy to do so, to show you everybody that is currently under contract. I would list them right off the, my, right off my head, but I don't want to leave one out. So in the interest of thoroughness, can I just get to you on that list?
It wasn't, I guess I wasn't trying to, you know, asking for a specific number. I guess I was just curious, just kind of in ballpark, how many do we have? Or do you, if you don't know?
No, I do know. So we have one specific for Washington, DC, the Costello Group is a secondary one, which is both Washington, DC and Illinois. We eliminated the Missouri consultants. I do have a consultant for the city of St. Louis, and that pretty much limits the group. So that's a net reduction as of the last fiscal year of probably five or six. Most of those contracts have been canceled, and I can show you that comparison again. But I just don't want to leave anyone.
That's helpful to know. Yeah, so about three right now?
Right.
Okay.
And Talby, they're all on the national side? You don't have anything in Missouri, correct?
I have nothing in Missouri at this time, zero.
Thank you. Any other questions about item G? If there are none, I do still need a motion to approve this specific item.
I thought I moved to approve, and then we had discussion, I'm sorry.
You're right. Thanks, Rose.
Sure.
And we had a second, so then we need a motion, an approval. You approve, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
No.
I'm gonna abstain.
And one, any other abstentions?
Commissioner Beach abstains.
Thank you. I think the motion carries.
No, it did not.
Oh, okay.
You don't have a cor- a coram on both sides of the river.
Okay, well...
Commissioner Beach can change his vote to a yes with that passed on?
Is that what you want it to do, though, Commissioner Beach?
Will that change the vote?
It will not. We would need three, three yeses from Illinois, and since we only have four in attendance today, that would not give us a draw on that side.
So then perhaps that's something that we move to the next committee meeting? I'm getting a nod from Talby. Okay. Then, moving on, correct? Thank you. We've got item 10, the external audit. We get the client service plan from Ruben Brown. This item was presented at the committee meeting, and it's for information only. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions, we can move on to item 11, the Bi-State Development Operating and Capital Budget for fiscal years 2021 through 2023. Included with the adoption of the budget is also the authorization and approval of several grant resolutions and agreement noted in Resolution 1046 through 1052. Talby and Tammy, can you please give comments?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. And please, I want to note to everyone that since we did a full budget presentation in the Ops Committee, we're trying to concentrate specifically on the effects of COVID, so what would be the modified slides and assumptions that we're going through? So just to get to a reference point, in your packet, under tab Operating, Capital, and Budget Presentation, we will be moving to slide nine, and we'll be moving through slide nine through 20, at which, at which point we will pause for any relevant questions. First, let me start, and I know, obviously, this is an extraordinary time, and we've been working very hard to first protect our team. We've been very aggressive and have had COVID protection issues, including full 100% screening of our employees since the 23rd of March. Also, then moving to limit potential exposure to our customers, frequent cleaning of vehicles, et cetera. And very, very early in the process, what we did is created a specific cost center for COVID-19-related costs, so that we are tracking those and have been tracking them. Obviously, what you're going to see are the estimates associated with those costs, and that is somewhat of a moving target, to be very honest with you, but I do believe we're being certainly diligent in figuring out what that is. The real strategy here is, of course, not only to secure CARES funding, but then if there are also other individual grants that we can apply for, and we are doing that, to try to maximize what is our financial capacity. As a matter of fact, I just signed a grant request from FEMA to pay for some of these individual issues, and the financial strategy being trying to go for every single dollar and pivoting the organization towards the primacy of keeping transit service out there and operating. So moving from slide nine to slide 10, I will be passing the presentation to my colleague, Tammy Fulbright. Tammy?
Good morning. So slide 10 is the statement of activity. This is almost exactly what you were presented in the committee meeting with one exception. So this statement of activity on slide 10 is a comparison of 2020 to 2021 budget before COVID impacts. So the only change to this slide was on revenue. On the total revenue, there was a reduction of about $100,000 to sales tax that we had to adjust, so I just wanted to bring that to your intention, in case you looked at it and saw the number was a little bit different. Going on to slide 11, this is the statement of activity for the impacts of COVID. And what you're going to see here is the comparison between the original 2021 budget and a revised budget for 2021 with our best estimate of what we think the impacts are going to be today. Most of the difference is going to be shown in the revenue section in 2021, so I'll kind of walk you through that area. For passenger revenue, what we did and what we are experiencing is a 40% loss in passenger revenue, so we took that average over 2021. And the next line item, that's where we get into the sales tax. So looking at our St. Louis City and St. Louis County sales tax, we are estimating about a 20% reduction in sales tax there. The next line item is CARES Act. So this is the act that is providing funding for, directly related to COVID. I'm going to skip that line real quick and come back to it. Also, interest income, we show a reduction of $2.5 million, and as you know, the Fed lowered rates to the zero to quarter percent, so we know that's going to impact our interest income. And so the skipping down to expense, you will also see that other operating expense, we have some adjustment there for about $7.5 million for COVID expenses. That's what we're estimating, it's just a rough estimate now of what we think the expense will be in 2021. So then jumping back up to revenue where that CARES Act line item is, that is where we're covering these reductions in revenue and this additional expense with 67, approximately $67 million that we will receive from the CARES Act. Skipping on to slide 12. This slide is an important slide, and we mentioned this last time. The reason we included this is it's important to note apples to apples on our operating expense. So when looking at 2020 compared to 2021, there are certain adjustments you have to make to really look at the operating expense the same, one of them now being the $7.5 million that we added for COVID, additional increase in non-capitalized projects of about 1.1 million, and the additional service and contract that we have with St. Clair County of about 5.3 million. So that gets our operating expense back down to $303.4 million. Comparing that to the 2020, 298.5 million, that's an increase of about 1.66% on operating expense this year. We worked really hard to get that number down. Over the last two years, our average is currently 0.85%. Skipping on to slide 13, this is pie just showing all of our different expenses, so all of that changed here is that we added the COVID-19 expense of the $7.5 million, which makes up about 2.4% of the budget. Skipping on to slide 14, these are cost impacting BSD, so we talked about the first three the last time, that we have our new labor contract with the ATU, security and police contracts in place, some additional expense related to workers' comp and casualty insurance, and now the COVID-19. And then skipping on to slide 15, this is just a comparison between our wages and benefits, and this slide did not change. Going on to slide 16, on that very far right on the other, you'll see a bar graph there, and that's where we added the additional $7.5 million, where you're seeing the 14.8 million for other expense. And then next to slide 17, this is the original funding partner and revenue sources that we expected for our budget. So this was before COVID. This is what we thought the makeup of our funding and revenue sources would be, but going to 18, we're going to show you a new pie that now takes into account the CARES Act. So what you will see here is that St. Louis County was decreased by the 20%, so approximately 33.5 million. St. Louis City decreased by 8.3 million or 20%. Also, we saw the decrease in passenger revenue of about 40%, so that's bringing that down to 23.1 million. And then we decreased the investment income by about $2.5 million or 20%, and then added the CARES Act of 67.2 million to the pie. And then on to slide 19.
So I just want to note on, so it's very valuable to kind of flip back and forth between 17 and 18 because that's showing before COVID and after COVID. And the light green, $67.2 million, of course, is, that is essentially the CARES Act funding. So we would expect some oscillation in that number, assuming that there is, we have estimated the sales tax impacts to be 20% right now. That's obviously over a full year. Obviously, in the first few months, we may have greater effects than that, but we're hoping over a year's period of time that we tend to stabilize. I've already started to have conversations with both St. I've already started to have conversations with both St. Louis County, St. Louis City, and of course, always talking to St. Clair County about then assuming that you all pass this board, that we have what is a cogent plan, that there is something with a certain flexibility, taking in some of the assumptions that our partners are assuming. As an example, St. Louis City, we would be scheduled to go in front of the Ways and Means Committee in two or three weeks. And they have concurred in general with that, that sort of planning downturn in percentage between 20 and 25%. So obviously, there's also the CARES Act, but there are other supplemental funding pieces that we are moving forward. And of course, there's the FTA relief program and that, and that's a case where we can convert some of our capital funds to operating funds. That is an extraordinary measure by FTA. We would try to look at that funding as a last resort. Of course, the CARES Act. Then, of course, we also have an opportunity, depending on market movement, to do another advanced bond refunding. We will be exploring that. We were successful in that last year. And assuming that we have reasonable market movements, we may be able to do that to make cash available for this very important year. Estimates on that bond refunding may net out somewhere around between $10 and $15 million conservatively. But of course, it is contingent on market movement. And then, of course, we will move forward on all other trust accounts for, for infrastructure. So for instance, the FEMA funding, I signed, as I mentioned, a grant, a grant request for that for roughly $9 million of funding. So we do require a match in that case. But, but what we should do as far as financial planning and are moving aggressively is move forward on anything that we can that is grant available using the CARES Act as the final piece. If I can move you to slide 20. We are there contemplating again our estimates on sales tax funding. Obviously, there are several different sales tax that make up the complete pie and we've tried to note those. I will, I just wanted to mention that, as a matter of fact, we've even gotten calls from our colleagues asking what we are projecting. I think the truth is, I don't want to give anybody the idea that I know exactly that it's going to be 20%. I do not. I think this is a new world and we're all struggling with what to project. I think what we've tried to do is give our best estimate of that and provide for a budget that we think we can move forward on and pass with our partners. So with that, I'm going to pause unless Tammy has any comments and we're going to pause a moment in case, in case there's any questions to come before.
I have a question. This is Fred Pastello. You know, I think we all wish there was more money available for public transportation at the state level and in the region. But I'm not optimistic that's going to change anytime soon. And so I, I think that, and hope and will assume that management is thinking, you know, we might not just bounce back out of this at some point in time. One may be a slow and very prolonged recovery. And so funding and ridership could be impacted well into the future for any number of reasons and I won't waste time going into them. So I, I think as you're planning ahead, forecasting for next year and then even thinking beyond, I think you've got to think long and ha, long and hard about significantly diminished sources of revenue and potential continued drop in ridership. Not that I would hope that happens. I mean, like all of us, I'm hoping for a quick, smooth and complete recovery, but just to be realistic. So I assume you're thinking along those lines. Thank you.
And, and, and to that point, Commissioner Pastello, I have frequently, over the years and even recently, asked the question of, to take it to its most extreme point. What would it mean if transit was just free for everyone?
So if I can address both issues. So first of all, this is the result of what is kind of a new planning paradigm that I'm pushing. And you have several of those initiatives before you today where I'm not trying to plan just for the next four or five months, but really more anticipate where the organization is going to be headed and positioned in 20 months and 30 months. I do believe that that's the economic cycle we should be planning for because eventually we will be on the other side of this pandemic and then we'll be looking at what is our efforts towards recovery. This will mean that we have some very hard decisions. I've tried to advance those decisions in front of you today, including what we think is a reasonable modification to our current budget. This, of course, then will mean that we are sitting down with our funding partners about levels of service and what is appropriate. So therefore, us being very proactive and being in front on those cutting edge issues is very key. I will say on the passenger revenue side, we had collected as much as $34 million prior, so prior to the pandemic. So it was a substantial amount of money for a very tight funding scenario. Obviously, our passenger revenues are down significantly. So that may change some of the narratives. I will say that we have other partnerships to think about. As you know, to limit COVID effects right now, we are not collecting fares on the bus system. Interestingly enough, I, ATU and our drivers are interested in us moving back to that fare because we have had some incidents with loop riding and some of those instances. And of course, that's counterproductive. We would like our operators to have less conflict with our customers than more. So it's, it's interesting how there are different effects. However, when we'll be looking around to try to increase ridership and moving towards how do we instead move into the recovery mode, maybe fair, free transit for a period of time is something that's very amenable and engages more of the public in our system and, and we'll be working very hard to get them back on the system. So I think that question needs to be balanced under the, what are these kind of very fluid times right now? And quite frankly, me personally, I have moved around on that, on the opinion of that and it certainly is a moving target.
If I could add, first of all, as one who's leading an organization that's going through the same sort of planning and contingencies in the midst of uncertainty I would never have dreamed of, I do want to thank you, Talby, and your entire management team. This is difficult. And we're talking about jobs and we're talking about a critical service and I appreciate everything all of you are doing. It's not easy. And again, particularly difficult because of the uncertainty, short term and long term. So thanks to you all for all the hard work you're doing and trying your best to continue to ensure that those who need or wish to have access to public transportation and get to critical needs can have, still have that access. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second. Talby, do you want to continue moving through or Tammy, the presentation?
I, I will. So at this, obviously, we were moving through the transit portion of the, of the budget presentation. When we will just move very quickly, I will add Mary Lammy to the presentation at this time. And I believe Mary, in conjunction with Tammy, will move through four slides. And I believe that we're moving up to slide 38 at this time. So hopefully, that's now on your screen. Mary and Tammy, if you will.
Mary, I'll let you take it from here.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. The slide that you have in front of you is an updated slide that reflects the Gateway Arch. And actually, if we could advance to slide 38. Perfect. And so what you see in front of you is with COVID impacts and without. And we as well have made assumptions. So if we focus on fiscal year 2020, we have reduced our revenue by approximately 30%. And the assumption that we used on that, and again, it's an assumption, is that the visitor center and the tram reopening would take place June 1st of 2020. And it's with the assumption that the ridership and revenue for the month of June would be reduced by 50%. And that's obviously based on a lighter attendance and restrictions for the number of visitors that would be allowed to go to the top of the arch. For expenses, we've reduced it by a little less than $300,000 and that reflects the reduced seasonal part-time employees. For the fiscal year 2021, again, we've made assumptions and we've assumed that for the first three months of the fiscal year, that we would incur a 35% reduction in visitation and ridership. And for the remaining months of that fiscal year, we would incur a 20% reduction. And so again, for 2021, you can see for the revenue, we're anticipating about a 29% reduction in revenue. For expenses, we basically kept it at that level. We do anticipate getting some nominal savings from other expenses that you see listed on there. We're also working with National Park Service. There may be an opportunity where they may want to increase our marketing efforts. So with that said, you can see that we are anticipating a loss in 2020 of little less than $750,000 in fiscal year 2020 and a loss of a little over $1.4 million in 2021. We have talked to the National Park Service. They've indicated that the shortfalls for both of these fiscal years could be covered by the beneficial fund. As of February of 2020, the balance in that beneficial fund was approximately $10.7 million. Are there any questions regarding the Gateway Arch update as it relates to COVID? Okay, very good. If we could then advance the PowerPoint presentation to slide 43. So this reflects updates as a result for the riverfront attractions with COVID. For our revenue, we have decreased it for 2020 by 35%. The justification was, was similar to what we did with the arch and that's where we're assuming the riverboats would be reopened June 1st and with a 50% reduction in cruises and cafe sales. For expenses, we reduced our expenses by a little over $360,000 and that's based on a reduced employment basement of our seasonal part-time wages staff. And then for fiscal year 2021, similar assumption in that, that we're anticipating the first three months of the fiscal year, 35% reduction in cruises and cafe sales, 25% reduction for the remaining portion of that year. As you can imagine, we've also considered the impacts of the cancellation of Fair St. Louis. We did receive quite a few cruises that were based on corporate cruises. And so we've reflected the fact that we're anticipating less corporate cruises. So based on those assumptions, we are assuming for the budget year 2020, a net loss of a little less than $300,000 for 2021, a net loss of a little over $122,000. As far as how we're going to pay for these losses, we would then add it to the inter-agency loan that we have with Bi-State Development. And as Talby has indicated, we are working closely with, with him as far as moving forward and taking a hard look as far as where we want to be in the next two to five years and really what the outcomes we are anticipating with the impacts to COVID and some of the numbers you have on here. And so the point with those comments are, we are going to be taking a very serious, serious look at those expenses moving forward. Any questions regarding the riverfront attractions?
I have one, Mary. I guess it goes for the arch as well. Is there any plan to furlough or lay off employees?
At this point, we have not, we were obviously taking a second look at all of these budgets and that's where Talby had mentioned that we're going to take a hard look at the next two to five years.
So are all the employees currently working, although there isn't anything going on?
The, the full-time employees are. The part-time employees that would typically were initially hired, they have been furloughed.
Okay. The only reason I ask that is because the best time, if, there is no good time, but the best time to furlough or lay off employees is now because the federal government is supplementing unemployment insurance. So I strongly urge you to look at that.
Okay, we will. Thank you.
Because, you know, it might keep you out of a huge deficit and also maintain salary for some folks who need it.
I second Commissioner Windviller's point. Thank you.
I, I will follow those comments. So we have been looking at some of those specifically, having to deal with some of these, some of these individual business units that, of course, are funded through general BSD operations. And we will look at that probably appropriately so under executive session and we'll be happy to move through it in that way. Okay?
Okay, if there are no further questions regarding the riverfront or the Gateway Arch, can we advance to slide 48 for the St. Louis Downtown Airport?
Please do, yes.
Okay, so updates regarding COVID to the budget for the St. Louis Downtown Airport. For revenue, we are anticipating our revenue is going to be decreased by a little over $100,000. That would be attributed to we are having less chartered planes landing at the airport. Typically, we would receive a very nominal fee for those planes that go towards the airport rescue and firefighting efforts. A majority of that loss in revenue is attributed to the fuel flow fees. And then for expenses, we're anticipating a reduction in a little less than $9,000 and that's mainly attributed to the overtime that we would incur from the staff when we have the charter planes landing. We are anticipating a net loss of a little over $5,000 for this fiscal year. For budget year 2021, we are anticipating a loss in revenue, $93,600. Same, same rationale and that is we're anticipating a loss in revenue from the fuel flow fees and then also because of a reduction in the fees that we would typically secure for chartered flights. For expenses, again, you can see we are anticipating a reduction in our expenses of a little over $4,400. And again, most of that's attributed to the less overtime. So that would then result in a net loss of about $21,000 for the airport. The good news is there are two opportunities for supplementing those losses from the CARES Act. The first one focuses on with airport improvement funding. We would then be allowed to recoup the local share match for the airport. We're anticipating a little over $75,000 over the next three years that we could recoup from those fundings. And then the second opportunity from the CARES Act focuses on the $100 million that was allocated for general aviation airports. For our airport, we received a $69,000 earmark and these are funds that you could use for operation and maintenance funds. And these are funds that we could also try and secure over the next one to three years. So those are obviously the funding sources that we are hopeful that we can recoup the losses that we anticipate. Any questions regarding the St. Louis Downtown Airport?
Okay, can I, can I note if there are any other questions? In the interest of time, I'm trying to move through this very detailed document quickly and I apologize for that, but especially, we do have a full agenda. And so I'm going to ask to try to pause on that basis and see if there are any specific questions and move on to close this item 11.
I actually have a question about the CARES Act and the 67 million and what you can use it for and what you can't. And if that's too detailed of a question to discuss now, can you, can you provide the board with more specific details about what the requirements are to accept the money and what Bi-State is going to use the money for?
So, yes, so I, So, yes, so I can give a brief synopsis. So we have already put in our application for CARES Act funding. One of the benefits of CARES Act funding is that it is through the existing bureaucratic procedures through our main funding partner, through FTA region in Kansas City. They, I do have a team who has completed the application, and we have gotten updates about what are the applicable expenses. And I will go over a little bit more of some of those in executive session, but we will be looking at specifically where we can apply those monies, and there are some points where we can and others that we cannot. And, but I would like to have that discussion specifically in executive session. Most of it, however, is for, for instance, if we use CARES Act funding for the, and specific to the transit funding under the FTA provisions to make up for that delta. So the delta in funding that we would have received with the sales tax. So as long as we document that properly, so for instance, in the case of St. Louis County showing that delta between what would have been the assumed sales tax, assuming no COVID effects, and then showing the delta between the two, that would be applicable, and that's the lion's share of what the CARES Act money would be. I can go into further detail, and I have significant documents, including a summary document on CARES Act funding that I received last night, that I'll share with the board just so you can see a briefing directly from the federal government of how to use the money. So I will be happy to follow up on, in that regard, Commissioner Windmiller. If that's it, and there are no further questions, I'll ask Commissioner Homan to ask for, to take over at this point.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
What, what is the process and what for budget adjustments throughout the year as more information comes in on revenues and expenses? Does the process adjust accordingly beyond the approved budget?
Right, so we would be able to work through that essentially, and I've prepared staff to think at a potential budget adjustment through, of course, look at how the first quarter comes out. We are in regular discussions with St., with our funding partners, and then we would receive those dollars. The, the cushion piece being the CARES Act, so we would, we would be able to draw down. So, so essentially, we have already applied for the, for the entire CARES Act funding, which is roughly $142 million. That is sitting, sitting there available to us as long as we document it and then, and then go through the procedures of asking FTA for the funding. Then, and that can move through very quickly, just like essentially $53.11, which are normal capital dollars, but we have established procedures on how to do that. What I am anticipating is within the first quarter, probably more specifically the first half of the year, we may need to approach our funding partners if there is a budget revision associated with some of the assumptions we've made, if there's any issues where we need to talk to them, and also with this board to explain how we've moved some of the puzzle pieces around to make up for funding. We, it is true that we've given our best educated guess within this document about how that will work, but I do anticipate that unlike previous years, we will have a mid-year adjustment to make.
Does the 142 million from the CARES Act include the dollars for the airport, or is that in a separate pool?
Yes, that, so the, the 67 million that we are showing right now would be drawn down from the CARES Act. So that would then reduce the CARES Act, obviously, then that 67 million leaving, you know, roughly another 70, 75 million dollars still available to us, trying to anticipate what those effects are. And indeed, we have the effects from this year. So we will be drawing on CARES Act because we are having issues with downturns in ridership and passenger revenue, so we will be drawing on that within the current budget year. So I know the CARES Act dollars sound like a whole lot, but when taken over the context of a long period of time and a very difficult operating budget to move through, we need to be very vigilant about preserving those dollars and making some of the aggressive moves that have been suggested, both by several of the Board of Commissioners and that I'm asking for today.
I'm sorry, my last question is, is there a separate pool of dollars from the CARES Act for the airport, or does the 142 million include the airport dollars?
It does not. The, the airport does have availability for other funding, which we will be pursuing, certainly because one of the regulating bodies of the airport is the FAA as opposed to the FTA. And we are anticipating major changes at the airport associated with, for instance, some of the major expenses at the airport are associated with charter service, which of course, the charter world is radically changing, so we will be looking at, you know, what can we do to that budget? And are there some separate, for instance, FAA dollars available to support that operation? So the CARES Act is, is that I'm talking about, the, the 142 million dollars, that is exclusively really on the transit side, does not involve these other business units. So we would be looking at different pots of money for the other business units, including the airport.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an item for approval, so we do need a motion.
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing them, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item 12, the contract award for temporary help services.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just very briefly, the contracts to be awarded is to 10 firms to provide temporary staffing services as necessary. This has been a bidded contract and is for a necessary period of three base years with, with additional option years in an aggregate amount to be $1.9 million. I want to stress that these temporary services can be a valuable option for us when we're looking at moving the organization through changes, which we're certainly doing in the next several months. So that's the extent of my presentation.
Any questions? Thank you, we do need a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Or abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. Item 13, discussion regarding potential refunding of Series 2013 bonds for savings. Tammy Fulbright.
Just to note, this is one of those individual financial arrows essentially in our quiver. We have done this already once, and it would be dependent on market, and it is one of the ideas to try to refund essentially in advance the 2013 bonds. What we would do is refund the bonds, avoiding the October payment, which then allows some capital to be available. I want to be brief on the comments so we can move through and be respectful of everyone's time. Are there any questions?
This is another item for approval. If there are no questions, does anyone want to make that motion? Did I hear a so moved?
Yes, Terry Beach.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Simmons, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. That, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Metro Transit Operations Report from Jessica Medford-Miller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time today. I want to give you a brief report on Metro Transit operations, and since we were last together on March 20th, our operations have been focused on emergency response. At this time, we have an established battle rhythm. We are moving through our operating plan and all of our attendant operating decisions based on where we anticipate our ridership, our funding, and our personnel availability will be in the weeks ahead. I focus the team on three primary objectives. Number one is protecting our team members and our customers. Number two is providing credible, reliable service that's responsive to customer demand today, and certainly preserves access to critical destinations and employment centers in this environment where our demand has shifted quite a bit. And then finally, we are focused on preserving our capacity to ramp up as the threat from the virus wanes and as we move through what we anticipate will be a relatively long period of recovery. With respect to protecting our customers and team, I know you, the board has received a number of updates throughout the last six week period. We have focused our protection efforts on, number one, cleaning and disinfecting our vehicles and our facilities, and reducing opportunities for exposure by providing our employees with personal protective equipment, limiting capacity aboard our vehicles. We shifted on March 21st to rear door boarding only, and at that time suspended fare collection on Metro Bus and Metro Coleride. We have asked that all of our customers wear masks that cover their nose and mouth. We have installed lines around the operator cabin on both bus and rail, requiring customers to remain more than six feet from our operators. We are manufacturing polycarbonate barriers right now at our main shop that would be installed on all approximately 300 buses that don't already have those shields in place. I anticipate that we'll have the installation on all of our buses in service complete by next week, and that shield is really intended to be a barrier against liquid transmission of the coronavirus. By the way, we're also working with our partners in Madison County. They've expressed a desire for the same polycarbonate shields, so we're working through an agreement right now by which, once we're complete with our own installation, we would manufacture and install similar barriers on their 39 bus fleet. We have hand washing stations within the public domain, especially where we have closed our indoor transit centers, trying to reduce congregation amongst our customers at this time. Now, our service strategy again is forward-looking. We are working to balance customer demand with our available operating resources. Like many transit agencies and many businesses across the country, we're experiencing very high absenteeism at this time. So in order to provide a sustainable and predictable level of service for our customers, we have scaled back. We've done this three times. First on March 23rd, when we shifted to a weekend level of service, seven days a week. Then on March 30th, we actually suspended service on some of our routes. And then on this past Monday, April the 20th, we implemented what I see as our sustainable service level as we're moving through the peak of this crisis. Now, that included suspending service on some of our light routes, which is a very difficult decision. We're also operating some of our lighter bus routes with Coleride operators and vans. We're using a subcontractor called Oats as well. This is a firm we have an established relationship with. Typically, they're operating in the paratransit sector, but they've shifted for a time over the fixed route. Within that service level, we have constructed it such that we're able to scale service back up as our demand rises, and namely, as our operator availability improves. In the event, which we, I don't anticipate at this moment, but in the event that our attendance erodes, we would also be able to peel back either trips or routes as needed. We will continue this service level through our next service change, which is the month of June. We're also operating a reduced schedule on MetroLink. We're working now to monitor that service and prepare for that June service change, which is our first level of ramp up. It would be a greater service level than what we have on the street today. It would likely still include scaled back service on MetroLink. One of the things we're trying to do on MetroLink is balance our service with demand, make sure we've got good bus and rail connections, but also support our construction schedule as we move through the summer months. That's one aspect of our business where our pace has not diminished. We are still performing our routine maintenance, and we're still completing a number of active construction projects across the system. I want to give you a snapshot of where we're at with ridership and employee attendance. On Metro Bus, our ridership has fallen since the beginning of March by about 55%. Ridership on MetroLink has fallen by 65%, and Coleride is down 55%. Now, we're seeing our route level ridership on bus vary between 25% and 100%, of course, for those routes where we've suspended service. Most of our route, including our busiest urban routes, are hovering at around the 50% ridership loss level. MetroLink has been pretty consistent for the last four weeks, and I want to note that ridership loss in Missouri on MetroLink is a little more pronounced in Illinois, which I think is reflective of the many multipurpose or all-purpose trip customers that we have in our Illinois market. Coleride demand is really heavily impacted by employers that primarily serve disabled team members. So we have something called sheltered workshops across the area, and when the sheltered workshops closed back on April, March 30th, we, we saw a significant falloff in Coleride ridership. So that's why we're using those team members in service to support fixed route. We also have our Coleride team members between shifts and a couple of Metro Bus team members at our main shop who are actually sewing cloth masks at this time as we work to back stop our supply of surgical masks, N95s and KN95s. Now, that service level has been sustainable. Talby mentioned earlier, we didn't miss any trips this week. That's a great improvement, and I attribute that to the changes in service that we've put out. All of the runs or the operator shift starting this past Monday are straights, so they are not split. Splits is where an operator comes in, runs part of their shift, has a long break, and then comes back for a second part. These straights are more tunable for the operators. The shifts themselves are a little bit longer. They're less than eight hours, some are as brief as six hours, which is allowing the operators greater time to rest. We're also getting those buses back to the divisions for additional cleaning, which is really an important part of our defense against this virus. Our absenteeism is still pretty high. So this week, for the first three days of this week, and I'll get yesterday's data here shortly, Metro Bus, our absenteeism is about 49%. Absenteeism on MetroLink is 22%, and absenteeism on Coleride is 27%. That Metro Bus absenteeism is a number that we're working to move. We're working with our human capital team to make sure that we have policies in place that allow our operators rest in absence when they need it, but encourages getting them back to work when they should be coming back to work. Now, as you're aware, this past Monday, April 20th, we launched a new employee incentive program that provides our team members who report for duty for every one of their scheduled shifts in a given week. That includes frontline team members and near frontline team members, like supervisors and mechanics that are essential for fielding our service. They would receive $200 of additional pay that's on their paycheck, taxed at their regular rate for each week. That has caused an improvement in attendance. I'm looking for that number when we combine it with some of the strategies coming out of the human capital team. I look for that to drive up our attendance, and that's important because we're still experiencing some overcrowding out there. Even though we lost 55% of our ridership, we still have markets where Even though we lost 55% of our ridership, we still have markets where demand is high and loads on our buses are high. This presents a more dangerous situation for our customers and for our team members. And so we're working to get those employees back out in service just as quickly as possible. Finally, we have, since day one, six weeks ago, we have focused on preserving our capacity to ramp up as the threat of the virus wanes. A big piece of that was lobbying very early in March for federal funding that resulted in the CARES Act. And as Talby and Tammy mentioned earlier, that 142 million dollars of CARES Act funding would help buoy our operating budget as we lose passenger revenue and sales tax proceeds, and we do incur additional costs associated with our COVID response. We're also working on retaining employees. As a, as a board, we've had many conversations with you over the last couple of years about workforce shortage, namely on Metro Bus and Metro Coleride operators. So we're working to retain all of those team members. Our recruiting efforts have slowed. We're not able to get CDLS for operator candidates. So we've taken those classes. We're retaining those brand-new operators, including those operators that don't yet have CDLS, and they're actually working in response, in support of our COVID response efforts. We know that without that influx of new team members, we would not, come summertime, have sufficient operators to support our regular levels of service, which is one of the reasons we're going to have to ramp back up. That and reduced demand, which is going to be driven in part by business reopening, as well as scheduling of special events. If we have a summer without events like Major League Baseball, that would be quite a blow to our ridership and to our revenue. It also impacts our, our operator utilization. We're very focused on sustaining our supply chain. We were slow, like many agencies and many businesses across the country, in ramping up our availability of personal protective equipment. We have a steady chain coming. We have sufficient masks on, on hand right now to support us for about two months, and we've got those cloth masks being manufactured and some on order right now because we anticipate a future where our team members and customers wearing PPE is going to become the new normal. We are preparing for a phased service restoration, so after June, our next service change would be late summer. We're continuing to monitor demand and operator availability to support those efforts. We'll communicate with you often. We're communicating with our workforce often, lots of informal conversations with the team, soliciting their feedback. We're also partnering with Amalgamated Transit Union, and we're hearing from our customers. And while ridership is down 55% on bus, our service level is down only about 30%. I, I must convey to you that many of our customers are deeply inconvenienced. We have routes that are running very infrequently, and we have routes that have been suspended. So we're hearing from those customers and working to devise strategies, especially in low-demand markets where we can ramp up. If you'll remember, at our last full board meeting, we asked the board to approve a contract with VIA for microtransit services, and we're working right now with VIA on that ramp up. Their service footprint will look a little different in a post-COVID world than it would have under different circumstances, but that's going to be one of the tools that you'll see being used to support our team members. We've also expanded our con, our customers, rather. We've expanded our contract with Lyft. They were previously providing last mile connections in about 18 different markets, and we're using them in additional markets where we have suspended service to connect our customers with our main line. The team is doing well. The team is a little tired, but as we've reached this pace six weeks in, we've been able to find opportunities to get critical team members breaks. We're rotating in our backups and our meetings and our operating environment so that we can sustain. Sustainability is a critical part of that battle rhythm. This concludes my operations report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So my big question, as per usual, Jessica, I believe you've given a thorough and very thoughtful report. I know I learned a lot, hopefully others have as well.
I agree.
And at the same time, I ask my usual question. I hope you know what's coming, but what isn't working right now? What are you concerned about? What should we, as board members, be concerned about?
So I am concerned about being able to cover the vast geographic market that we serve, which is 550 square miles in Missouri and Illinois, with significantly diminished human capital. That's my concern. So even as many businesses are closed and our demand footprint has changed, trying to stretch that, those human resources and those vehicles over that area is a big concern. So here's how we're working to respond to that. We have preserved almost all of our routes that are in markets where there are no nearby options. So you've seen some of our urban routes suspended or have a skeletal level of service because there are nearby options, but in places where one route is all they've got and there's still demand, we've continued service and we're using Coleride and we're using Oats. Now, as we move into May, if the state of Missouri ramps up, as they're stating they will, we're going to see an increase in para-transit demand as those sheltered workshops and other businesses open back up, and that's going to potentially threaten our ability to field service with Coleride vans. So we are very focused on trying to get our Metro Bus operators in particular back to work. That's our greatest threat at this time from an operational standpoint. And then certainly financially, our ability to sustain what we do with greatly diminished sales tax proceeds, and at this time, very light passenger fares is a concern. And Commissioner Holman, you had a question earlier about passenger fares and fare payments. So at this time, we've suspended fare pay, fare collection on bus and Coleride. We're contemplating a future where we would resume fare collection on Metro Bus. Now, our primary reason for suspending fare collection was to reduce the operator customer contact at the front of the bus where the fare box is located. We've gone to rear door boarding. Once we have all of those shields installed, and now we have personal protective equipment, we didn't have that back when we made this decision on, on March 20th. Now that we do, there are some opportunities to resume fare collection. Part of why that's important is, of course, to help support our operating budget, but it's also to discourage induced demand. We are seeing demand on some of our busiest bus routes be relatively high, and we're hearing from bus operators stating that customers are either loop riding or they're riding with no apparent destination, and it's causing those loads to be big. So we're really grappling to balance operator and customer safety, support of our community during this time where so many people are experiencing economic distress, with really trying to keep those loads manageable and safe. We have not been able to cap our bus loads at 10 customers. We've heard this request from our union in some properties across the country. They tend to be smaller suburban properties. Our capping at 10, we're not able to do that. We're capping at a seated load, but we are still, even this week with our new service plan, passing customers up in some markets because we have a full seated load, and that looks like about 40 passengers on a bus, by the way. So that, that's not distancing.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I just had a comment. First of all, thank you, Jessica, and I just want to express my gratitude to the operators who continue to come in every day and do this incredibly difficult job. I actually have had, I've heard from, from two. One was an operator directly, and one was someone who works with an operator. And both of them expressed concern about the safety of, they were both bus drivers, the safety of the bus, the buses, and the fact that there were a lot of people that in the past perhaps hadn't ridden transit and were using transit as, you know, they either were, could possibly have been homeless or could have had some issues, and, and they were getting on the bus because there was no charge. And the operators, while empathetic, were very concerned. So I just wanted you to express my gratitude to the operators for all that they're doing. That's a very, very difficult job, especially at a time like this. And also, thank you for thinking about the safety of the customer and the operator by installing the Plexiglas in the buses. And hopefully, things will turn around. But I, I think it's entirely reasonable for you to think about the worst-case scenario and not having any kind of large public events until well into the fall. So I just encourage you to think about that, and, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynn Miller. I think we would have second and third and all in favor with your comments. Is there anything else?
Yes, this is Commissioner Simmons. Is there any way that we could send out, and I don't know if there's a newsletter, to the staff, to the drivers, expressing the Board of Commissioners appreciation, kind of like what Commissioner Lynn Miller just mentioned, something that they could get personally that has just been drafted up and letting them know that we're, we're thinking about them and appreciating the job that they're doing.
Yes, absolutely. We, we can do that. We will draft a message for your review this morning.
Thank you. Again, I think we would all agree with that. In the spirit of moving forward with the meeting, I will go on. That was for information. So is there any unscheduled business? Item 15?
No, Commissioner.
Thank you. I will call for the dates of future meetings, please, Myra.
Yes, the next Security Self-Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 14. The next Operations and Audit Finals and Administration Committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 21st. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting is scheduled for Friday, June 26th.
Thank you. The next item is Executive Session. I will need a motion that this committee go into Executive Session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under by State Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.OBO, D1 Legal, D2 Real Estate, D3 Personnel, and D10 Audit. We need a motion and a roll call vote, please.
Simmons makes the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Myra, are you calling roll?
Yes.
Can't hear you.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynn Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Holman?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach? Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Golly?
Yes.
Commissioner Costello?
Aye.
Commissioners Emma Man?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we need to click on anything for Executive Session, or does this automatically go private? How does this work?
Uh, two quick, two quick things, Commissioners. So I do want to mention to the public while we're still out that there will be a recording of this open session available by 5:00 PM today on the BSD website. Additionally, while we move into Executive Session and limit the participation, if, Commissioners, if I can ask you, and thank you for your patience so far, just to hold for a minute while we set that group up. Thank you.